We are live.
Good evening and welcome to the Glendale City Council meeting being called to order at 6:00, sorry, I gotta check the time, 6:06 on October 19th, 2021. To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, City Council, as well as Board and Commission meetings, will continue to be closed to the public to in-person attendance. You are encouraged, though, to watch and participate from the safety of your homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high definition on the city's webpage, glendale.gov/live, on youtube.com/mikeglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called Screenweed and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. If you would wish to call in for public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken, and that agenda item is discussed. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. Councilmember Najarian, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Please rise and join me in our salute to the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Help us work in unison and guide us to come together, to combine ideas, to achieve our aspirations. I pray for our mayor, assembled council, various levels of city officials, and our residents to choose unity to meet the best interests of our jewel city. Amen.
Thank you. What's next, please? Mr. Jimmian?
The agenda for the October 19th, 2021, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on October 13th, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next?
Next would be presentation and appointments, 3A agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, October 26th, 2021, by John Talktalyan, Deputy City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of City Council. Next week in the afternoon will start at 3:00 PM with a special meeting of the City Council. One item on that agenda, and that's going to be from Community Development regarding the status of the preservation and reuse of city property, also known as the Rock Haven Sanitarium at 2713 Honolulu Avenue. And in that report, we'll also be seeking direction on the preferred next steps from our City Council. In the evening for our City Council meeting, we have a number of items under consent. The first will be a report from the Public Works Department regarding consulting services to provide edible food recovery programming, followed by a report from Human Resources regarding an amendment to a professional services agreement to extend the contract for occupational medical services for the city of Glendale. Under action items, at 8A will be a report from Community Services and Parks regarding seeking feedback on the feasibility of creating a dog park here in Glendale, followed by another report from Human Resources regarding a memorandum of understanding between Glendale and the Glendale Management Association on behalf of Glendale managers and executives. And the final report on the agenda for next week is going to be from Community Development regarding an update on recently enacted state planning, zoning, and housing legislation that became effective on January 1st, 2022, and it will include a discussion on Senate Bill 9, as well as consideration of an interemergency ordinance option. That concludes next week's preview.
Thank you very much. What's next, please?
Madam, Madam, Mayor, I have an appointment.
Oh, Councilmember Agajanian, please.
Yes. For Building and Fire Board of Appeals, I would like to nominate Annette Galisian, who is residing in Glendale. She educated, her education is from University of Southern California. She has Bachelor of Science and Pepperdine University School of Law, JD degrees she has. And then she showed some interest to be a member of that board. So I nominate Annette Galisian for that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Next item?
Next items are, next item is consent items, including the minutes to following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I would.
I'll move the consent calendar, or second?
Okay. I move it.
Whatever order.
Thank you.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Brotman, seconded by Councilmember Agajanian.
Okay.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. And what's next, please?
Next would be City Council and staff comments.
Okay. Are there any council members that would like to make some comments tonight?
I do have a couple items.
Okay.
Well, three items. First, very, very quickly is AB 43 was signed by the governor. This is the bill that Laura Friedman wrote, and it would give us more flexibility in how we set speed limits so that we could vary from the 85th percentile rule. And my request is if staff could come back to us at some point soon and tell us what the potential impact of this is on Glendale, or maybe I should say, how we can take advantage of this to do, make some changes that we might have wanted to make before but couldn't. And I just mentioned it earlier to Mr. Imrani, and I think maybe he can say something real quick on that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Councilmember Brotman, our staff is working on developing the implications and implementations for the AB 43 as we speak, and would be happy to bring back a report on that.
Okay. I just wanted him to say that because I mentioned it, and he said they're already ahead of the, a step ahead, I guess, and working on this.
Madam Mayor, I apologize. We're gonna need a second if council desires a report back.
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay. The second item I have, and RM, could you put up a slide that I sent you? Do you have that? Or at least get it ready. I was talking to a woman who works for a nonprofit called the Local Initiative Support Corp., or LISC is their acronym. They're a national nonprofit, and they support community development initiatives. They've been hired by the state of California to help get more people enrolled in the California COVID Rent Relief Program. They are working with, here in Glendale, they're working with the Glendale Youth Alliance, they're working with the Armenian Relief Society to reach Glendale residents, to try to help them, especially residents that may not have a computer access, or computer or internet access, I mean, to be able to apply for the rent relief program. She mentioned to me, and this is the slide that I hope you can put up, that they're holding an Armenian-language teletown hall on Thursday. And do you have that? Or are you still looking for it?
Looking for it still.
Okay. And the approach they're taking is that they have a list of Armenian-speaking names that they're gonna auto-dial and kind of get them to opt into the teletown hall, and they'll explain what they do. Essentially, they'll actually, they have a center where people can come in, and they can actually provide like a concierge service and help get people signed up. Because as we all know, there's been a kind of under-enrollment, under-performance in this program. There's money, but it's not getting out to the people in greatest need. So I mentioned this for, in the hopes that we can maybe push out this information on any of our platforms. It's on Thursday. And for Councilmember Agajanian to perhaps mention on his TV show, because this is going to be all in Armenian. And if you can get that up in a minute.
Councilmember Brotman, can you resend that to me? If you have, because I'm looking for.
Okay. Well, let's come back, let me do my third point, and then I'll resend it to you while others are giving their updates. On a related note, and I'll tell you why it's related in a minute, I want to nominate Regina Alkasar for the Parks Commission. My Parks Commissioner, Jane Patel, had to resign because she moved to Altadena, she bought a house in Altadena. So she was very disappointed but had to leave, so I'm appointing Regina. Regina came to Glendale as a teen and graduated from Glendale High School. Her undergraduate degree, it was USC, in policy planning and development. And then she worked for five years with a firm called Community Arts Resources, and actually worked on our urban arts, what do you call it, our Urban Arts Master Plan, I think is what we call it. So she had some experience working with Glendale. Then she went to New York and got a master's in urban planning from Columbia, and has just recently returned to Glendale. And she now is actually working for LISC, which is the organization that I just mentioned, and that's how I found out about this Armenian teletown hall. She is a child of Filipino immigrants. She has a son at Edison, and she lives in South Glendale, which checks all my boxes for a Parks Commissioner. So I put her name in for nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then. Any comments from staff?
Did you get it? No?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then let's go to community event announcements, please.
I do have one caller.
Okay. What's here?
Catherine Yurka, you have three minutes. Catherine, go ahead.
Thanks. I sent a slide in. Would you please, if it could be shown to the council?
There you go, Catherine.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Devine and members of the City Council. Thank you for taking my call. I attended the public workshop, a housing element, that took place on October 11th, and I was quite pointed and frustrated, and I did want to share my feelings about it and the reasons for them. First, they could not even send out a link at work. So I believe that many people were unable to get to the meeting. Fulton did not seem to understand that it didn't help to us, to the meeting, in the chat, for people who had to figure out how to get in. This did not inspire a lot of confidence in the consultants. The main problem, however, is much more substantive. This was an opportunity for public comment, and there was nothing to comment on, as we were simply presented with the facts of what a housing element is, what RENA numbers are, what Glendale's obligation is, how many units need to be assigned to each category, how many units Glendale has already planned for in each category, and how many units in each category Glendale still has left to plan for. And that was it. It seemed that virtually no substantive progress had been made the previous situation that they had done to count a couple of months before. The public doesn't need to comment on facts. We need to comment on the city's ideas, how and where it proposes to build these units. As you can see from the slide that I posted, the draft, the public review is November 1st to December 1st. However, on November 1st, the draft housing element is already proposed to be sent to the Department of Housing and Community Development, meaning that we'll be unable to incorporate new public comments before sending it to the state. Notice also that the Planning Commission is set to hear it on December 15th, before the city will have received back comments from the Housing and Community Development Department. This is outrageous. This is not meaningful public comment. I did want to point out that Assembly Bill 218 was signed with the governor in September, I believe. This would require cities to allow at least 30 days for public comments for a draft housing element, and if comments are received, the city would have to wait at least 10 days to consider and incorporate those comments before they sent the draft to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm not sure when that new law goes into effect, but I think it's worth looking out that the way Glendale is handling the housing element completely violates what this law is designed to redress, which is a failure for local governments to really gather meaningful public comments. And I hope that you will be held to the new law, that we will really have time to make our views known. Thank you very much for the time to comment.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you. I'd like to ask staff, if Mr. Lanzafain was there, to comment on some of the remarks that Ms. Yurka made.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, I believe that the comments, that the community will be commenting on the draft document. They're not commenting on HCD's review. It's happening at the same time. The input that we were looking for is what types of things in the policies, in the goals and objectives do you want to see? What impediments do you see to fair housing? Those are the types of comments that would be incorporated, and I believe that's in the spirit of the recent legislation. As Ms. Yurka stated and was on the slide, we do anticipate having, sending this to HCD for a 60-day review on their part. They will be looking at the components of the element. Do we have the maps to show that we've got the zoning? And what HCD is looking for is, do you have available zoning? Do you have the zoning to develop the number of units that you're responsible for in RENA? Not necessarily, we're not identifying where they go, what units are going to be built first, are they going to be built on this property versus that property? We're merely showing them that we have the zoning to accommodate that development. They will be looking for, did we address the impediments to development? And all those things that we had asked for, input on from the community. We will be sending that November 1st for their review. We will also, we're technically planning to come to the City Council on November 2nd with a report, an informational report for you that the community can view. We will have our document available on our website. They can comment on it, and we will be making, we will be responding or making revisions based on those comments. And then all of that will come back to you at the end. I think we're scheduled January 25th. Now, if there's something that the council doesn't think is right or needs to change, we would have opportunities to do that. There's two more meetings before the deadline of February, I think it's February 11th, 2022. So we do see an ability for the community to comment. They're commenting to you on the draft plan, because ultimately, you are the approver, the City Council. You approve that plan. HCD will have reviewed it and say, yes, you have the components that are necessary for the plan. But really, they'll look at the objective part of it. Do you have all those elements? The subjective part, the policies, the goals, the objectives, that will be up to the City Council to consider and approve. Once that's all done, we'll send that to HCD with your approval. If we were to alter that at some point in the future, we would again send whatever changes, whether they were maps, different goals, different objectives, we would send that to HCD, again, for their review and comment.
Madam Mayor, I'd also like to add that Mr. Lanzafain and his staff are planning on another community workshop in the near future.
Thank you. Thank you very much for addressing that. Thanks. Okay. Another caller?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any callers, but I do have the PDF that Councilmember Brotman was talking about. I can put that up if he wants me to.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead for a few seconds, if you would.
And maybe one of my colleagues can translate it.
Well, I'm sure it says CA COVID-19 Rent Relief.
Yeah. Basically.
Thanks.
Protect yourself.
Well, there's.
It says protect yourself from eviction.
Wait, can you make it smaller?
Sure.
Thursday, October.
Oh, no, yeah. There you go.
Thursday, October 21st at 6:30.
Yeah.
Call 833-589-2149, or go to housinglskey.com.
Housing is key, I believe.
Yes. Housing is key.
Is key. Okay.
Madam, Madam Mayor, since Mr. Brotman brought this up for almost over a month, every, I mean, twice a week, I read this to the general public, that they can get to the, not to the phone, because I tried with others, it's very hard to get to the phone. But housingiski.com is where they have to file, and they will pay all the rent which they are behind. So, but I.
And this would allow people that, you know, don't have a computer and everything, they would help them out.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, and let's hope they get a good response. Fantastic. All right. What's the next item, please?
Next item would be 7, Adoption of Ordinance, 7A, City Attorney Regarding Updates and Cleanups to Campaign Finance Ordinance and Public Financing of Local Campaigns.
Okay. Mr. Galanian?
This was brought to us by Councilmember Kasakian on October 5th, 2021. One is Ordinance for Adoption, Amending Section 1.10.030, 1.10.060, and 1.11.020 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the Conflict of Interest, Use of Campaign Funds and Disclosure Requirements. Two Ordinance for Adoption, Amending Title I of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 by adding Chapter 1.09 relating to Public Financing of Local Campaigns and Implementing a Local Election Candidate Filing Cost Assistance Program. Three, Resolution of Appropriation in the Amount of $60,000 for the ordinance implementing a public financing of local campaigns and implementing a local election candidate filing cost assistance program.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Mayor Devine, members of City Council, this ordinance was introduced on October 5th by Councilmember Kasakian, as it was stated, and it also includes, the revisions, the updates include direction we have, we had received at that meeting from council. We could have Ms. Doreen Martyrosian, our principal Assistant City Attorney, to provide an overview of the ordinance, if you like, or if council has questions, she's available, as well as Mike Garcia, our City Attorney.
I'm sorry.
Are there any questions from council?
I, Ms. Devine?
Yes.
I don't have question, but I want to make sure that they briefly, they will explain this ordinance for the benefit of the public.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine, council members. Before you are two ordinances and a resolution, the first ordinance amends the existing Glendale Municipal Codes campaign, a conflict of interest provisions, by clarifying what can and cannot be done during an election cycle. The second amendment is to add attorneys who are representing litigants against the city who have also made campaign contributions to council members to the conflict of interest provisions. And the third amendment is to require disclosure where a parent company appears before the City Council or Boards and Commissions, and there is a relationship or a membership in the sub-company of the organization, or vice versa. That's the first ordinance before the City Council. And the second ordinance implements the Candidate Statement Filing Cost Assistance Program. Council's direction was for staff to check with Los Angeles County to see if the city could directly make the payments to the county on behalf of the qualifying candidates. I did reach out to the county and confirm that what the county does is, they go ahead and they submit an invoice to the city for the candidate statements, and that way, the qualified candidates can do the necessary paperwork, and the city can just go ahead and directly pay the fees to the county of LA. So under the second ordinance, the filing cost for the candidate's statement in the English language in the voter booklet would be paid by the city for qualifying candidates. Last election cycle, it was $2,300. It's expected to increase, sometimes decrease. It all depends on the number of registered voters for that election. And the second fee that would be waived is the city's filing fee of $25. And again, the qualifying candidates would do the paperwork. Now, to qualify, the candidates would need to be on the ballot, of course, and they would need to agree to limit their third-party contributions that they will be receiving to $50,000. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
All right. Very good. Questions?
Can you tell us the very last part, Doreen, that if you receive that assistance, you're limited to a $50,000 total contribution? Is that?
Councilmember Najarian, yes, that's correct. For third parties, in-kind contributions do not count towards the $50,000, and also the amounts paid on behalf of the candidate are waived, which is the $2,300, or whatever the filing cost may be during that election, under $25. That would, they would not count towards the $50,000 either.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for this, these ordinances.
And if I could, Madam Mayor, yeah, they have to be moved individually?
Individually? Okay. All right. Let's go for Item 7A1, Ordinance for Adoption. That's the conflict of interest.
Why we don't do together?
Because they have to be.
Because Mr. Garcia just said we have to do them separately.
Okay.
Councilmember Najarian moved it. I'll second.
I have a motion from, I have a motion from Councilmember Najarian.
Sure, I'll second that.
Seconded by Kasakian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. And Item 72.
I'll make the motion for the ordinance at A2.
Thank you. Second?
Sec.
Agajanian, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes.
And I'll move the resolution. I'll move the resolution at A3.
Thank you. Kasakian.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Agajanian, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. Thank you. Next item?
Next item would be B, Community Development Regarding Adoption of a Moratorium on Hotel Development in Downtown, introduced by Councilmember Brotman on October 5th, 2021. One would be Interim Urgency Ordinance prohibiting issuance of entitlements and/or permits for hotel development projects in downtown-specific plan DSP area.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay. And I just want to make a comment that I read that CBRE adjusted its forecast for the hotel industry to reflect relatively low occupancy, so I don't know that this will hurt anyone. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. And next item, please.
Next item would be 8, 8, Action Items, 8A, Management Services Regarding Environmentally Preferably Purchasing, Preferable Purchasing. One Motion to Direct Staff to Develop an Environmentally Preferable Purchasing Policy to Set a Standard of Sustainability. to set a standard of sustainable and environmentally preferable procurement and demonstrate the city's commitment to environmental, economic, and social stewardship.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Divine, Member City Council. This item was requested by Councilmember Kasakian and seconded by Councilmember Najarian. Essentially, the report that you are going to be presented tonight by David Jones, our Sustainability Chief Officer? I just added that. And the report outlines some of the strategies that if directed by council, staff can use to enhance our existing environmentally preferable purchasing policy. Like to mention that Apsin Bokai, our Deputy Director of Finance, Purchasing Administrator, and Michelle Flynn, our Director of Finance, also available to respond to your question. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
David Jones, Sustainability Officer. So, seeking a motion to direct such staff to prepare an EP policy, and seeking City Council guidance on elements that may be included in the policy. Staff have received input from the Sustainability Commission on some of these recommendations, and these are included within the staff report provided for this item. In the presentation, I will touch on the rationale for expanding the current environmental preferable purchasing policy, review some of the key tenants that may be included in the policy, and outline next steps. First of all, the expanded EP program will accomplish the City Council priorities of fiscal responsibility and sustainability benefit. So, why should we pursue an environmental preferable purchasing policy? Why should we expand on a current policy? Cities are large consumers of goods and services. Expanding the scope and scale of the EP program is an opportunity for the city to align internal practices with our current sustainability goals and future climate action and adaptation plan initiatives. An EPP policy can enhance reputation of the city amongst its residents and citizens. An EPP policy can help reduce risk, for example, reducing the exposure to goods and services that may have a negative environmental impacts. Developing street strategic supply relationships to assist the city in helping meet its sustainability goals, and expand on those a little bit later. Engaging the employees in sustainability efforts. And finally, having an EP policy is often a requirement for CalRecycle grant applications. So, what are the goals of an EPP policy? What are we trying to achieve? The ultimate goal of an expanded environmental preferable purchasing policy is to encourage the purchase of environmentally preferable goods and services, and to benefit from the positive environmental impact associated with those products. And to procure those environmentally preferable goods and services in a manner that is cost-effective and enhances the achievement of our sustainability goals. Want to be able to empower staff to successfully pursue environmental preferable purchasing goals by providing guidance, manuals, and other support necessary for staff to carry out the potential policy. And importantly, to establish and keep a continual improvement process following the Environmental Management System method of Plan, Do, Check, At. So, we don't want to be static. We want to improve the policy as we go on. So, what are some of the key tenants that we think should be within such a policy? First one is source reduction. What we mean by this is driving efficiencies within our environmental preferable purchasing program. Examples are encouraging practices that reduce waste and encourage reuse, discouraging the purchasing of single-use products where alternatives may exist, purchasing where appropriate in bulk, hoping to reduce deliveries and packaging, and leveraging relationships with our suppliers to reduce packaging and help them become supply chain partners. Another key tenant is that of recycled content products. The EPA designates products that can be made with recovered materials and recommended practices for buying these products. Once a product is designated, federal procuring agencies are required to purchase it with the highest recovered material content practical. Some examples are printing paper that has a minimum recycled content of 30%, or carpet that has 25% to 100% recovered content materials, or mulch requiring a minimum recycled content of 80%. A written EPP policy should encourage the use of the EPA CPG or CalRecycle State Agency Buy Recycle Campaign, which is similar to the EPA program. Another key tenant is that of procuring energy efficiency and water efficient saving products. The recommendation to purchase energy and water efficient products in a policy is to encourage the purchasing of the most up-to-date energy and water efficiency functions, as technology is always progressing in these fields. An example of that is high-efficiency heat pumps. Today's heat pumps can reduce electricity use for heating by approximately 50%. So, we want to keep this in the forefront of staff's purchasing decisions. Another key tenant is making the use of third-party specifications. Eco labels are marks placed on a product packaging that can help purchasers quickly and easily identify those products that meet specific environmental performance criteria, and are therefore deemed environmentally preferable. A written policy should encourage purchasers to use eco-label products as a recommended purchasing option. The benefit of utilizing eco labels is the work of pre-screening for green products and services has been done by other parties. Another tenant is that of extended producer responsibility. The OECD defines extended producer responsibility as a policy approach under which producers are given significant responsibility for the treatment or disposal of post-consumer products. Assigning such responsibility in principle could provide incentives to prevent waste at the source, promote product design for the environment, and support the achievement of public recycling and materials management goals. We feel that where laws have been established, specifications and contracts should contain EPR mandates. An EPP policy should also encourage discussions with supply chain partners to look for EPP opportunities, EPR, sorry, opportunities in other areas. Another key tenant of the EPP is that of price preferences. Try saying that ten times. Price preferences enable purchasers to pay more for a recycled product up to a certain threshold. Providing some price flexibility can assist with the sourcing of products with desired environmental attributes. And finally, in developing an EPP policy, there is a number of policy options that are available. As the policy is developed, the city may wish to establish a minimum environmental specifications. Where all things being equal, it shall be mandatory to purchase the green product, such as a ream of paper. The city may also recommend developing specifications for other products that have desirable attributes and are comparable to non-EP products, such as carpets or electric vehicles, where there may be a price differential. So, what are the next steps? With council direction, we can look to draft environmental purchasing policy. And the point of discussion today would be how robust, or how strong, or how effective City Council members would want that policy to be. We'd circulate that draft EP policy internally and to the Sustainability Commission for review and comment. We'd incorporate feedback and comments into any revised policy and present a final EP policy to City Council. With that, I'm available for any questions. And as the City Manager said, we have Ashwin Bokai on the phone to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have a caller on.
You've done a lot of good work here, David. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, any comments, questions from council?
Madam Mayor, I do have a caller on the line.
Okay, well, okay, let's take the caller before we get to the council comments, since no one's jumping into the ring.
Jennifer Pinkerton, you have three minutes. Jennifer, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, and staff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. By way of introduction, I do have several decades of experience in this arena, with the city of LA, with private businesses, and as a former staffer with Californians Against Waste. I'm also a member of the City Sustainability Commission, and many of the comments that I'll be presenting here tonight, I presented those at the recent Sustainability Meeting where an overview of the EPP policy was presented. I am calling to advocate very strongly for an EPP ordinance, not a policy, and not recommendations. And the ordinance should have mandates or default mechanisms for core products. Per the city's own report, the city's had a recycled products program in place for more than 25 years. It's a policy, obviously not an ordinance, but the results of that are unknown and not discussed in the report. My experience has shown that policies are too often overlooked. They're difficult to institutionalize, especially as staff changes and retires, and an ordinance is always preferred. Paper products represent low-hanging fruit, because paper typically represents a significant expenditure for most governments and should therefore be prioritized. This includes copy paper, printing paper, paper office supplies, and janitorial papers. And we should note that state law SB 1383 has a mandate that all paper purchases have 30% post-consumer recycled content, unless they're more expensive, and that governments no longer purchase non-recyclable paper products, which would mean things like paper envelopes that have plastic bubble padding. The city's vendors have to be allergic to these requirements. It's become effective on January 1st. Still on the issue, paper kept copies of all printed documents I've received from the city, and only one of those states that it was printed on recycled paper. The city should obviously be printing on recycled paper all the time, and really should include that legend for educational purposes alone. I was very surprised to read that the report references recycled motor oil and vehicle warranty validation. That's a decades-old myth. Southern California Edison switched its entire fleet to recycled motor oil years ago. Quality recycled oil certified by the APA, which is what the city should be and is likely already purchasing, is of proven quality, along with other, many other recycled automotive products. In addition, the Magnuson Moss Act addresses warranties on recycled products. Lastly, I wanted to let you know that I shared this, not to take away from staff, but just because I work in this arena and have a lot of reports I've developed, I shared a very detailed draft EPP ordinance with the city, and that includes extended producer responsibility, or EPR elements, in the hopes that that would be the city's EPP process, and I'm very happy to assist with this in any way I can. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, my question right now, after hearing Jennifer, this was brought to the Sustainability Commission. Did she give this input at that commission meeting?
Mayor Divine, yes, Commissioner Pinkerton did give that input, and we did mention about the environmental, the EPR within the report. As regards the recycled oil, we were just referring to laws that are on the books, and we just wanted to make sure that we didn't pin the city down into where a manufacturer may say that you can't use re-refined oil, but we're not saying we shouldn't use it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, so most of what, so what she said, you've already kind of built in?
So, we haven't written the policy yet, so we want to get, as we write the policy, we will look to build in some of those suggestions given to us by City Council. And as I said, we will go back to the Sustainability Commission with the draft policy for their comment.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Council, colleagues, comment? Is that the only call?
Correct, Mayor. That is the only call. That is the only call.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to my colleagues then.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, so, just on the motor oil thing, it's a small thing. I wasn't going to bring it up, but since it came up. I think the point she's making is simply that there is no such thing as a contract where a warranty is voided by using recycled motor oil. That's no longer legal. So, that was the point she's making there. So, there's nothing, it's just, we could just take that out, because it doesn't exist. That's a small thing. I think, you know, the other thing she talks about, and I spoke to her separately about the fact, you know, that this is a policy, not an ordinance, and I think that was, I'm not sure if she brought it up at the Sustainability Commission meeting, did she? That aspect?
That aspect, that aspect was not addressed at the Sustainability Commission meeting.
Okay, I know that, and I asked, you know, the City Attorney, you know, what's the difference? And I don't know, but I would like it to be as strong as possible. So, if doing it as an ordinance is going to kind of focus the minds a little bit more, I would prefer to do it as an ordinance. And I noted that we did the single-use plastics ban for city operations as an ordinance. So, it would be consistent with that. So, that would be, my two cents would be to do it as an ordinance. I would also say that where we have those EPA lists, which is the EPA, what's the CSG, or what is that? The procurement guidelines? Okay. My understanding is that that's a very comprehensive list. There are a lot of items on there that we would typically purchase. And those items have all been vetted as being available by manufacturers, cost competitive, cost competitive, and meeting the, you know, kind of standards for recycled content. And so, my suggestion would be that anything we buy that's on that list, any item that, yeah, from the items on that list, that becomes our default. That becomes our set of specs. We don't buy things that are, that don't meet those specs, as opposed to saying we're going to give a price preference to things that meet those specs. I think that should just be a standard default, and it's very easy, because those lists are there. All the work has been done for us. And I think there's also a state agency list that I think has kind of similar. So, maybe, you know, that would be for staff to say, which list should we use, or do we combine them, or how do we do that? I don't know. But I would just say, use that as the default. Products that are new, I guess, that are not on the list, or that are kind of a little bit more obscure, unusual, there, I think, is when we might want to consider some of these third-party labels, or we might want to consider, if there is no third-party label, to the extent we can, maybe giving a preference, a price preference, or a preference in terms of points, or something for the label with, with a product with the better environmental attributes. But I know that's going to be a little bit more complicated, because it's not as if we can go through and do a lifecycle analysis on every product that, you know, every obscure product. So, I would just say that, and yes to the extended producer responsibility. I think we absolutely should include that. And I believe that, you know, just, well, last point is, thank you for this report, because this was a very long and complex, I mean, a long report with a lot of material, a lot of complex material in it. I believe you've done this work before. Didn't you tell me you'd done this work in North Carolina?
For our university, yes.
For the university. So, your experience with this, and it's great we have you, somebody with experience with this kind of work on the team. So, thank you so much for taking the time to get, to get all this down. And I hope we do it. And rather than use words like encourage use, I think we should require the use of these, at least these products on the default list. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian, Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to echo and say I thank you for the work that staff has done, Jones. And I think that, I want to also thank the commission for their input. It's an important step for us to do this. I think it's long overdue, but there's no wrong time to do the right, right thing. One of the particular items that I would like to see is that if there is the ability to find the replacement products that are more sustainable, and they happen to be manufactured here. I know it's. I know it's part of the formula as to how far it travels, et cetera. I think that's beneficial. You know, we want to also spur the local green economy as much as possible and help create those jobs that we keep hearing about, you know, we've heard about, spoken for a long time. And I also like, particularly important for me is the low toxicity of cleaning products. There are people that have more and more growing sensitivities to that, and especially with COVID, some of the products that we're using to ensure that we're keeping our areas disinfected happen to be also products that may not have the best chemicals for human exposure, pet exposure. I think that anything that we can do to ensure that what we're using as disinfectants doesn't have high levels of toxicity would be appreciated. And I know that there's some technologies out there. Someone from MIT had reached out and shown me something that uses ozonated water that is highly effective, about 99.9%. So, I support this. Thank you, and I look forward to making this a standard operating procedure for the city moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Agajanian?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian?
I'm happy with the report. You know, should we make this an ordinance or a policy? If it's an ordinance, I mean, these are, this is going to be our procurement departments that are going to be potentially violating the ordinance. And what are we going to do? Find them? We're going to put a mark on their employment record? I'm not sure that's the best way to do it. I think a policy gives us a little more enforcement flexibility in terms of bringing up a employee on violating policy rather than charging him with breaking an administrative law, which leads to attorneys and certain rights and document production and a whole rigmarole of other things. So, I would, I would think we should just stick to this as a city policy when, when it does come before us. I like the guidelines presented, but I don't, I don't think an ordinance is the way to go on something like this once we develop the policy.
Thank you. Well, I was going to ask to, to do some research on this being an ordinance, but I guess, Councilmember Najarian, you've kind of covered that. So, if that is the case, Mr. Garcia, is that the case?
Madam Mayor, members of council. Yes, so, the, as part of the city's overall purchasing policy, those policies have normally been contained within our administrative policy manual. And that's, certainly, as an internal, as a document that controls internal activity, that is normally how it's done, and how, from our perspective, it would make sense because obviously it's, it takes a, it'll take effect sooner. If there are changes that our, that staff wants to, needs to implement with obviously council approval that would make it, you know, more protective, or there's new technology, then it could, it could do so in a more expeditious fashion versus an ordinance. You have to go through the process of coming to council, introducing an ordinance. So, that's, from our perspective, there's no, legally, there's no difference in terms of its effect or application between a policy and an ordinance. And typically, when we have proceed, excuse me, procurement rules, they are done by policy.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's good to know. Okay, so, I, I think this is very ambitious. I think it's strategic. I think it's comprehensive. As I said previously, Mr. Jones, you've done an outstanding job with this and the Sustainability Commission. I'm glad it's going to go back so they can, you can revisit it with them and get, you know, tweak it a little bit more so that we get all of their comments and concerns answered. I do like the idea of using the, as Councilmember Brodmann said, the procurement guidelines. I think that's probably a good idea. Might save staff a lot of time. So, I'm, and I know that your goal is price flexibility. So, you know, and I trust that, that staff will, will go along with that guideline. So, I'm, I'm willing to approve this as well, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Councilmember Kusakian, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Enroll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brodmann?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you. What's the next item?
Next item is 8B Community Development regarding Authorization to Release RFP to Update the Bicycle Transportation Plan. One Resolution Authorizing Release of a Request for Proposal to Update the Citywide Bicycle Transportation Plan.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Galanian?
This is Mayor Devine, member of city council. Our existing bicycle transportation plan is more than nine years old, and the goal of the effort to update that plan through the RFP process is to, to include new developments that have occurred since that time in the, in active transportation planning arena. And I'm going to turn it over to Bradley Calvert, our Assistant Director of Community Development, to present the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of city council. As mentioned, our bicycle transportation plan has become rather well-dated when compared to best practices and current practices. Excuse me. And what we're here before you this evening for is to, to one, give kind of a quick update on the current status of the bicycle transportation plan, an overview of what the scope will be for the RFP and the update of the bicycle transportation plan, a timeline to go along with that, and then the request to release the RFP to begin the update. During the budget season this year, council allocated $125,000 to begin a study to update the bicycle transportation plan. We are going to match that with other outside funds for a total of $250,000 for this study. We believe that's an appropriate, appropriate amount to be able to overhaul a document that is of its current age and with as many best practices that have changed since then. The current plan was adopted by city council in September of 2012. That plan recommended periodic updates and check-ins with council, which we have done several times as new projects have emerged. First-last-mile connectivity near the Larry Zarian Transportation Center is a good example. We had brought it before council in October of 2018 to have those discussions. We have also brought it forth to council for a number of different study sessions to kind of give an update of how this works with other plans and programs. One of the challenges with the current plan is that it's a bit detached from some of the new policies that are in place. We recently updated the citywide, or adopted the citywide pedestrian plan. There's a number of other studies and initiatives that should be incorporated in it to ensure that all of our documents are speaking to one another and acknowledging the importance of multimodal transportation. This will also improve our opportunities to be able to access outside funding sources to actually implement the projects by having more cohesive documents, more integrated documents and policies and plans. The purpose of the original plan was really to create a network of routes, really focusing on the concept of network, not just discrete routes, not just discrete paths and streets, but a network that was logical, that would take users from their homes to places of employment and entertainment. It also looked at improving existing bicycle facilities, new routes linking major activity centers, and then amenities such as installing secure bicycle parking, making sure that those kind of facilities and amenities were in place, again, to try to encourage users. We have discussed this before at prior sessions, but just a quick refresher in terms of the types of bicycle infrastructure that exist. Class one serving as a dedicated path. This is what we see along the Los Angeles River. This is something that the Verdugo Wash project will aspire to have. A dedicated path that is separate from motorized transportation can be shared with pedestrians as well. But this is a dedicated exclusive right-of-way. Class two are restricted right-of-ways, usually designated by a striped lane. This is very similar to what we see on Central Avenue, but not physical separation incorporated into it. That can be for a number of different reasons, but it doesn't provide the same kind of level of security that, say, a class one bicycle path would provide. But a class one is also not applicable to all potential streets. Just another example of class two bicycle lanes, as you can see, separated space, not protected though. And then class three, which does make up much of our current bicycle transportation plan, bicycle routes and travel lanes that are designed or signed by signs only that that is a shared space for both motorists and cyclists, commonly done with what we refer to as sharrows. You can see the two arrows and the bicycle symbol on the street. There are also class four bicycle lanes, and this is something that is probably largely absent from our current plan. And one of the reasons to consider doing this update is this has become really the preferred means of bicycle infrastructure. It is a separated bicycle lane. It is still within the right-of-way, but you can see there's a number of different opportunities to create that separation. It can be done with bollards. It can be done with planter boxes. It can be done with wheel stops, curbs, many, many different varieties that this can occur. But this is something that is not largely represented in our bicycle transportation plan, and one of the reasons why to consider the update now. There are opportunities for us to look back at what we've completed, and are there opportunities to enhance that into a more sophisticated and protected class of bicycle lane? Are there opportunities to add new, new lanes that do meet this, this kind of standard, which has really become the best practice? This map represents the northern portion of the city, planned and implemented routes. You can see the dash line represent those that have been implemented, the solid lines representing those that are planned as part of the bicycle transportation plan. Red is class two, separated lanes, but not protected. Class three are the sharrows. And then also the network for the southern portion of the city as well. What's not represented in here are a number of other studies that are currently going on. You can see the Verdugo Wash is outlined here, but our West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study is one of those significant projects. The bicycle transportation plan has thus far, from what we can tell based on the data, provided results. You can see in 2012, that was the year that peaked with the most total injuries for bicyclists, and that has trended downward as, as the years have marched on. So, we can see that improving the facilities has led to safety. Improving those even further could, could lead to even greater safety. We did see a bit of a spike in 2019 compared to some of the prior years. And the need for that update really goes back to those classifications of bicycle infrastructure. There have been changes in what's considered best practices, what, what is needed to make all cyclists feel comfortable, not just those that we would consider to be avid cyclists, but how can we create a network and infrastructure that is safe for users of all ages, users of all types, the casual rider to the, to the more intense commuter? And this is just some of the examples that we have, which have been completed. They have been a step in the right direction. This is an opportunity for us to look back at those and say, is there, are there opportunities for us to advance that even further? As I mentioned, a number of projects have been ongoing. An opportunity for us to integrate these better into the plan, the West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study. We brought an update back to council here a few months back. An opportunity for us to create a protected bicycle lane on West, or on Glen Oaks. And there were two alternatives to that. We are still doing public engagement to identify which of those two alternatives is most preferred by users, but it's a significant investment in the bicycle transportation network for the city. There were also complete street concepts for other nearby streets. Again, focusing on that idea of creating a network and memorializing this as part of our plan, part of our network, and looking at that and considering how can we potentially expand on that other, with other nearby streets. And there's also the Verdugo Wash. This could potentially be a rather significant spine for our multimodal network, particularly for pedestrians and cyclists. An example from the Escondido Trail. A chance for us to also restore natural habitat. But even more importantly, this could serve as a spine that can connect to some of those adjacent routes. We'll be coming back to council with some of these concepts here in the near future as we continue to develop that. We're currently in the public engagement phase. But again, this is, this could represent a very significant feature to our multimodal transportation network. And recently, we conducted a meeting with our consultant team, and this map kind of illustrates that. That green line representing the Verdugo Wash and seeing the kind of networks that could tie into it. Are there opportunities through this bicycle transportation plan to identify new networks, new streets that could tie into them? And again, elaborate on that network, create a more extensive bicycle transportation network in the city. So, the scope of the work, as I mentioned, this is really looking to have better coordination with other multimodal policies and strategies. That includes the recently adopted pedestrian plan, Vision Zero. That is a policy that we intend to kick off here in the near future and bring that information back to the council as well, but it's something that will play significantly into the bicycle transportation plan. Looking again at target improvements for high collision areas. We will be looking at that collision data. We will be taking new counts, updated counts, find out which streets maybe saw increases in ridership that increased that demand for enhanced infrastructure, increased that demand for, for needs for safety improvements. As mentioned before, it's an opportunity for us to reassess those initial plan recommendations. Maybe we could go a step further with some of these. Maybe we can identify new streets. And as mentioned, integration with other significant initiatives, Verdugo Wash. BRT is another example that will impact several streets in Glendale. It's an opportunity for us to overlap those, those connections and integrate those transportation networks. Those opportunities to upgrade improvements and also to ensure equity, to make sure that this network is connecting those that need it most, those that desire it most, those that may be relying on it. As part of this, it'll also include a very robust and targeted outreach program. As with any project, we will have several public engagement events. We will have our own internal working group, but we will also have an external facing stakeholder advisory working committee that will help inform this, much like we have done with the prior plan, much like we have done with the citywide pedestrian plan. That way, lending the experience and the expertise of those in the community, those who will use this network. That will be a very important component of that, something that we'll start to formulate as the RFP is released, and we think about who we would like to see on that, that committee to help inform. Our timeline, if council gives us the authorization this evening to release this RFP, we would release next Monday. We would anticipate having a consultant and contract in place in January of 2022 and beginning the project in February of 2022. We anticipate that this would be about a year-long process. Much like any major initiative, we would come in with regular check-ins with both city council, Transportation and Parking Commission, other significant stakeholder groups and organizations around the city. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. I know we've had an outcry for this update for a few years now, so I'm glad to see that we're finally moving on it. My colleagues, any questions, comments? Any phone calls?
Madam Mayor, I do have a caller for this item.
Mayor, I'll wait for the caller, I'll wait for the caller, and then I'll make my comments.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Kusakian.
Patrick Murphy, you have three minutes. Patrick, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I live up in North Glendale in La Crenna area along Sycamore Avenue, and I appreciate the presentation by Mr. Calvert just now. It has answered some of my questions that I had, but I do have a few more. First, I'd like to know how we would be able to see a copy of the RFP so that we have a clear understanding of the scope of that RFP. I do understand the purpose of the RFP now. I would also like to know the types of companies that are receiving the RFP and who will be responding. I guess you don't know that yet, but we would like to know the type of company that is receiving it. And I guess, lastly, I'd like to comment on the robust outreach that Mr. Calvert just mentioned. We just became aware recently, and I'm going to say in early September, of the re-engagement of the Verdugo Wash as being considered for a bike path. We had no idea it was occurring. The only reason we did hear about it was because of the outreach to the Homeowner Association of Whiting Woods. It is our understanding that the only outreach that's going on right now is to Homeowner Association. There are no direct mail pieces that have been sent. We have not received any direct mail pieces. We are not part of a formal homeowner association. We would request that any meeting, for example, such as this evening, that the community that is affected directly by this Verdugo Wash visioning be communicated with on a very regular basis. There is a meeting coming up this Saturday with people within the Sycamore Woods area. It is not a formal association, but there is a meeting that will be taking place, and Mr. Calvert will be attending, and we do appreciate that. But all community members that are directly affected by this Verdugo Wash visioning need to be communicated with on a regular basis. And I can say that we firmly object to it. And there are many, many reasons. I don't think this evening is the proper forum in order to be able to convey those objections. They will come to light. The only thing I would like to get across is the communication. It's not happening robustly in any way. is the communication. It's not happening robustly in any way, shape, or form. And I would like to thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members, and again, Mr. Calvert, for your presentation and the opportunity to speak and make our views heard. Thank you.
Thank you. So my question, Mr. Calvert, is are the announcements to these meetings put on our website so that the entire community is aware of them, even when it's a homeowners' association?
The meeting that was referenced was actually the first meeting that we conducted. We did not have that on the website, as we have been trying to go to each individual neighborhood to conduct these meetings. We're speaking specifically about the Verdugo Wash, but we have been, and as mentioned, we're actually going back this weekend as well for another one. We can add those on there. I think the goal was for us to try to meet with each individual neighborhood and have conversations specifically with them.
I think it's my opinion, and I can get, my colleagues can comment as well, but I think these outreach meetings should be advertised and noted to the entire community, not just to a neighborhood or a certain area, but put on our website. So anybody that wants to come, attend, no matter where they live, along the Wash or anywhere in the city, actually, they have the ability. They'll be informed about them from now on. Okay, so, Mr., let's see, Councilmember Kusakian, you wanted to speak first.
Yes, I will support this. Obviously, I think it's important that we move forward with this so we can ensure the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists in the city, to see how we can best, do our best to minimize the number of incidents of collisions with pedestrians and bicyclists. I would like to reiterate my support for designated, separated bicycle lanes, which I think make it much easier for people to bike around in the city versus experienced bicyclists, who I think are more or less predominantly the bicyclists that we have now. It would be great to see some more casual bicyclists, people who are not enthusiasts, like I know, for instance, our city treasurer, Manukian, who's a bicycle enthusiast and even a mountain biker. I think it's important for folks to, you know, feel safe where if they choose to take a bicycle versus taking a car to run a local errand, that they don't feel like they're taking their life into their own hands, or they may end up as a hood ornament. So in that regard, I do want to emphasize that there be particular attention to wherever we can to do so, and I've actually made the case for some certain areas of the city, including along Glen Oaks. With that, yeah, I support this, and I will wait to hear from my colleagues.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Agajanian?
Yes. Did I hear it right? Mr. Murphy was saying, Mr. Calvert, you're going to go and explain to their neighborhood about this, what you presented today?
No, Councilmember Agajanian, that is for the Verdugo Wash specifically. The outreach for this will not start until next year, until a consultant is on board, and we have developed our public engagement plan. We are currently running simultaneously, though, public engagement for the Verdugo Wash.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have one more caller for this item.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead. Let's hear from the caller.
Adrian Griffin. Adrian, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi. I would want to mention, as somebody who lives in the north, north, north area of the community, that we really are not getting enough information into the community regarding the changes for the Verdugo Wash area. We have some grave concerns about somebody who is not a member of the city pushing a personal agenda through, and that would be called Robinoff.
Mr. Griffin, if I may interrupt you, this item is not concerning the Verdugo Wash, I don't believe. Is it, Mr. Garcia?
You're correct, Madam Mayor.
Now, this is about the bicycle transportation plan, and the Verdugo Wash project is a completely different item, so.
Paula, I understand what you're saying, that they are partially together, and they were discussed in what was presented. And I just want to be clear that the people of North, North Glendale are very concerned about the plans that the city has for a bike path traveling up the Verdugo Wash area, because they were created by someone outside the city, and they don't have the city's best interest as a citizen, okay? I do agree, on the other hand, about what's going on for... Yeah, and I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay.
Madam Devine?
Councilmember Brothman.
Yeah, I have some comments here. So firstly, thank you, Bradley, for this. This is near and dear to my heart. I may be the only one that does regularly bike around the city and, in fact, recently got rid of my car, so I am more and more depending on the ability to ride safely to do the things that I do around Glendale. So thank you for this. I really think, and I think, you know, you said this already, and I just want to emphasize this, that the focus really should be on riders riding for utilitarian reasons, not just recreational riders, because what are we really trying to do? We're really trying to make people feel safe so that they take more trips by bike that they would otherwise take with a personal automobile. We're trying to get what's called a mode shift. We want people coming out of their cars and riding their bikes, right? And that's really important, and safety, if you don't feel safe, people aren't going to do it. I mean, I'm doing it every day. I feel unsafe. I'm doing it anyway, but, you know, you can't expect, you know, parents with small kids to feel comfortable letting their kids out on bike. So we need to focus on those utilitarian riders. What can we do to create that mode shift? And, you know, all ages and abilities, really all ages and abilities, including kids. And I think that safety has to trump auto delay whenever there's a trade-off between the two. Safety has to be number one, and we've heard that from our community. So that's one point. The next point is about sharrows, and I appreciate, Bradley, what you said about sharrows, that, you know, I really don't think they should be considered bike infrastructure. I think we should be looking at those maps without the sharrows on them, because sharrows really are just not appropriate unless they are in very small roads with, you know, low speeds, sometimes, you know, the roads that don't have center lines. Like, their sharrows are okay, but, I mean, a sharrow down Canyatta, near where I live, is just kind of nonsense. It shouldn't even, it shouldn't be what we consider infrastructure. So I hope, and when we go forward, we really, we show maps without the sharrows, because I think that's going to show how far we have to go and how little actual bike infrastructure we have in the city. So Class 1, great. Class 2, great, and I love the Class 4s. I just don't think Class 3 really should even be considered as part of our plan. And the last thing I want to say is just about community input. I do recommend, and I think you might have said this, but I recommend, you know, when the time comes, a joint presentation to transportation and sustainability. I think they both have an interest in this. And I would recommend that you, we appoint maybe one person from the Walk by Glendale group, one person from the Transportation and Planning, Transportation and Parking Commission, as part of the vendor selection team. I think that would be healthy to have some of those voices be able to help us look at, you know, who the best vendor is for this project. It's a very important step we're taking, and we really want to get it right. We did a great job with the pedestrian plan, and I hope we can do something that's of equal quality with this bike plan, and I think we will. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian?
Oh, so, very interesting point by the caller. I don't want to sidetrack this, but there's someone from out of the city who's dictating our Verdugo Wash?
Councilmember Najarian, last time I checked, I did still live in the city, so I'm not sure what that comment was about.
I know what the comment is about, if you want to know. I mean, it has sort of piqued my interest, and I want to turn to the city attorney. I am conflicted on any discussion involving the Verdugo Wash. If this bike plan, RFP, is contemplating coordination with the Verdugo Wash, is it better I stay away from this, from participating in this?
Councilmember Najarian, it probably is until we can see if this decision can be segmented from the rest of the transportation plan.
Okay, so I'm just gonna turn my speaker off and...
Okay. All righty. So I'm the last one, and like I said, people have been screaming for this update for a couple of years, well, more than a couple of years. And I think if we want to move into more multimodal transportation, this plan is absolutely necessary. I also think that with a focus on connectivity and networking, I mean, that's one of our biggest goals, I think, in our city, is to connect north and south, east and west. The Class 4 bike lanes, I'm all for those on Main Throw-Affairs. I encourage staff to really look at using those and putting those on our streets. I think they're just so much safer, and that's our biggest two goals. One is, of course, the multimodal transportation, and number two is the safety. So I am, of course, for this plan. I think it's about time we've done this, and so I would entertain a motion.
I'll second it.
Was there a motion I didn't hear?
Oh, I made the motion. Sorry, my microphone was off.
Okay, so it's moved by Councilmember Brothman and seconded by Councilmember Kusakian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brothman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian? And Madam Devine?
Yes, and the next item, please. Thank you.
Next item is Public Works Regarding Standardization of Wheeled Kart for the Collection of Refues, Recyclables, and Organic Materials to Toddler LLC Toddler. One Resolution Adopting Toddler as the City Standard for Wheeled Karts for the Collection of Refues, Recyclables, and Organic Materials and Dispense with Competitive Bidding for the Procurement of Wheeled Karts On-Site Replacement Services and Wheeled Car Parts for the Collection of Refues, Recyclable, and Organic Materials from Toddler.
Okay. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Madam Devine, member of the city council. Our Public Works Department regularly purchases wheeled carts for the collection of solid waste, including recyclable and organic materials, and for over the next five years, they plan on making some significant major purchases to replace damaged carts. The carts that are built with, I have to get this correct, rotationally molded plastic bodies have proven to be more durable and last longer. Therefore, the department recommends that we standardize these wheeled carts to the manufacturer, which is Toddler, and make that as the standard. So we recommending you approve the resolution adopting the standard and dispensing with competitive bidding. And if you like a more detailed presentation, I'll turn it over to Mr. Imroni, our Public Works Director, if you have any other questions.
Does council need a report, or are you willing to just go ahead and?
No, I'm ready to move this item.
Okay. Councilmember Brothman, move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brothman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Madam Devine?
Yes, we've already started this process, haven't we, kinder?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yep. Okay, next item.
Next item is Public Works Regarding Contract for Sign, Paint, and Thermoplastic Road Marking Maintenance Services for Motorists, Bicyclists, and Pedestrian Safety. One Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing the City Manager Who Is Designated to Execute an Amendment, the contract number 8000736 with Stern Dahl Enterprises Incorporated, increasing the amount by $351,420 for the installation of Class 2 Bike Lanes and Creative Crosswalks and Pedestrian and Bike Lane Striping and Configuration Maintenance.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Madam Mayor, member of the city council. Per council's direction, back in September of this year, Public Works Department solicited bids for Class 2 Bike Lanes and Creative Crosswalks Project. Unfortunately, they didn't receive any bids, and one option would be to rebid this project, which will take at least five months, and we will have, we may have jeopardized the metro funding that we have received. That needs to be expanded by December 31st of this year. Therefore, the department is recommending that we extend Stern Dahl's Enterprises' contract, that they are a longstanding contractor, that they have done this type of work for the city for a long time, and the price that they have bid and offered is reasonable and affordable. Therefore, we're asking council to approve the resolution dispensing with competitive bidding, and so that we can extend this contract in the amount of $351,420 for the installation of this Class 2 Bike Lane and Creative Crosswalk. I have Sarkis Organesian, our principal civil engineer, if you'd like a more detailed presentation. I believe he has a couple of pictures that he'd like to show as examples of creative crosswalks.
Great. And Mr. Galanian, this is a case of use it or lose it?
As far as the metro funding is concerned, yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, that's what I thought. Okay, let's have the report. Sarkis?
Good evening, Madam Devine. Sorry. Good evening, Madam Devine, members of city council. I'm here to give you guys an update on the installation of the Class 2 Bike Lanes and Creative Crosswalks. By way of background, in May of 2019, the city was awarded an Open Streets grant to host an Open Streets event. In May of 2021, the city council repurposed the Open Streets grant due to COVID-19. In August of 2021, the city council adopted the plans and specifications to advertise for bids. In September of 2021, no bids were received, and we negotiated with an on-call striping contractor who has an existing contract with the city Glendale.
Sarkis, can you give me a second? We're having some technical difficulties. Let's bring it back up again.
Sure.
Were you here, Sarkis?
Yeah.
Still not showing. Give us a second. How about now? Beautiful. Go ahead, Sarkis.
And just to reiterate on the background, the funds need to be fully expended by December 31st of this year. During our repurposing efforts that we were asked to do in regards to the Class 2 Bike Lanes, the Public Works Department reviewed the bicycle transportation plan to select corridor-ready locations, and we identified two corridors that required minimal pavement reconditioning. In regards to the creative crosswalks efforts, the Community Development Department reviewed the citywide pedestrian plan to select crosswalk locations. They identified nine intersections that were part of Phase 1 of the plan as low-cost projects at hot intersections. Hot standing for intersections that have high collisions, high pedestrian and bike demand, and an impact area such as downtown Glendale. They further decided on two types of graphic designs, which I'll present in further slides. And for purposes for this presentation, we'll call them Type 1 versus Type 2. Uh, and, and for purposes, uh, for this presentation, we'll call them type one versus type two. Type one is basically infilling a crosswalk area between two existing longitudinal stripe lines uh, that exist on the outside. And type two will infill the crosswalk area between the zebra pattern that you see uh, in most other crosswalks. So for the scope of work for the class two bike lanes, uh, it consists of approximately one point uh, fifteen miles total. And the two locations are located on Glenwood Road between Grandview Avenue and Virginia Avenue, and Honolulu Place between Honolulu Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue. Regarding the creative crosswalks, three intersections were selected out of the original nine due to the limited funding and the favorable pavement conditions. That's three intersections for a total of twelve crosswalks. Uh, the three locations are Glendale Avenue and Broadway, Central Avenue and Wilson Avenue, and Pacific Avenue and California Avenue, shown on the location map below, all located within downtown Glendale. And two of the intersections, uh, at Glendale and Broadway and Central and Wilson, will undergo a type one creative crosswalk, shown in the upper right-hand corner. Uh, this is an example uh, from Fort Lauderdale, Flor- Florida. And the final location, the third location, Pacific and California, uh, will undergo a type two uh, creative crosswalk, shown on the bottom picture uh, on the right side. And of course, all the materials, patterns, and the colors will be for the latest approved FHWA and MUTCD recommendations and guidance. As part of the scope of work uh, for Stern Dahl's contract, uh, as part of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, uh, two thousand twenty-two approved budget, uh, the city council appropriated fifty thousand dollars in Measure S funds for creative crosswalks and pedestrian bike lane striping and maintenance throughout the city. In regards to project cost and schedule, the class two bike lanes are going to cost a hundred and eighty thousand. Creative crosswalks at the three locations, approximately ninety-three thousand. Uh, we're gonna maintain a construction contingency of twenty-eight thousand four hundred twenty, approximately ten percent. And the maintenance and operations is going to cost uh, fifty thousand dollars, as I indicated earlier, for a total cost of three hundred fifty one thousand four hundred twenty dollars. Uh, we will begin construction uh, almost immediately once the uh, amendment is certified, uh, approximately in November, so next month, and uh, construction uh, will end uh, by the end of the year so we can meet our funding deadline. And the maintenance and operations, uh, it will be ongoing through June thirtieth of next year. If you recall, I had mentioned nine creative crosswalks were identified uh, by the Community Development Pro- uh, Community Development Division Project, Community Development uh, Department. And uh, we're taking a phased approach uh, for this project, which would hold the advantage of seeing how the first three intersections turn out. Um, and staff will come back to council for additional funding at a later date for the remaining six intersections. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, that's kind of fun. Um, any comments uh, from my colleagues?
I, I do have a question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, um, my question is, um, could you just explain how um, how we're handling kind of the artistic design element of, of these creative crosswalks? Because I know our plan was to work with uh, Library Arts and Culture and the Arts and Culture Commission, but I know you're, you've got a time crunch for these three. So how are you planning on handling it? How are you deciding, you know, what, you showed us those images, but you know, what is it going to look like here um, in terms of the, the design uh, pattern?
So the two design patterns were identified uh, by Community Development, and uh, they're uh, pretty much going to be taking on uh, the schematic that you saw, Councilmember Brotman. Um, the colors are going to vary based on the uh, California MUTCD guidelines and the FHWA guidelines. Uh, but the patterns are approximately going to be similar to the ones that were shown.
Okay, was there, was there any input from Library Arts and Culture or Arts and Culture Commission on, on these designs?
Councilmember Brotman, uh, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, uh, let me just interject. In terms of these two, these intersections, we are, uh, because of the time constraint uh, that we have to um, expend the funds, and because of certain limitations by uh, FHWA guidelines in terms of what we can and what we can't use, we're, we're a little bit limited, which is why we use the templates that were provided to uh, pretty much implement those uh, as, as you saw in the presentation. Uh, however, when it comes to intersection, um, doing uh, intersection, painting of the whole intersection, we are going to collaborate, which is a separate project. We are going to, going to collaborate with the uh, Library and Arts um, uh, Commission, uh, or Arts and Culture Commission, excuse me, to uh, basically uh, commission uh, artists that uh, will come up with the creative designs for the full intersections. But for these specific uh, crosswalks, uh, we're not uh, using any artist renderings. We're going with the existing templates, as was uh, shown to you earlier in the presentation.
Okay, but for the, then the, the following six, how are we doing that? I mean, because these are pretty, you know, these are visible, they're in, they're in like, you know, important parts of the city that people are going to be seeing a lot. I think we want to make sure we're, we're getting the best design elements. Um, can we engage them for those uh, upcoming six?
Uh, we can certainly, uh, we'll have more time, uh, when we come back for, to request additional funding. We have more time to, to do that, and we can certainly look at collaborating with them. And again, within the guidelines established by Federal Highway Administration, uh, we can uh, look into utilizing those artists.
Okay, that would be my, my um, request, if, if others feel.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. uh, Councilmember Kusakian?
Sure, I, I think I made myself pretty clear on where I stand on the class two bike lanes, and I think I agree with Councilmember Brotman that um, you know, just share rows or, or even a painted lane doesn't do much, but I understand that we have these funds, we have to expend them. In terms of the way the crosswalks look, Mr. Organesian, uh, do we have any information as to whether, um, besides looking festive and looking nice and colorful, is this going to have, or has it been proven to have some sort of impact on uh, traffic uh, patterns or pedestrian crosswalk awareness?
Uh, Councilmember Kusakian, uh, in terms of uh, that question, uh, we don't have that exact um, information uh, available. Uh, we have reached out to these uh, cities uh, in Florida and South Carolina. We have requested uh, information. They have been uh, limited in forthcoming with that information, so possibly for the other six, we would have more information if we come back to you guys, uh, for those.
And, and I'm fine with approving this moving forward with what has been brought forward by staff, and I appreciate it. But um, for any additional uh, expenditures and funds, I would like us to see, I would like to see us um, put in not only a little bit more um, creative, artistic um, uh, effort. You know, when you go down to Chinatown in, uh, close to downtown LA, the crosswalks there have uh, Asian art theme with uh, various motifs like dragons and other design elements. And I think we could probably do some more creative things with, you know, given the, you know, diversity of our community. We have Artsakh Street, obviously. I've mentioned we can use some um, Armenian rug patterns, which uh, can be used as, as a motif in certain parts. But also, uh, I've asked that we look into doing something that would potentially be almost like an optical illusion. Um, you know, the raised blocks or whatever else that has been done in other parts of the country and in European cities, that, now maybe for the regular driver on the street, they'll get over it pretty quickly, but in areas where we have more um, out-of-town traffic and there's maybe more speeding patterns, it would, um, or even nearby schools, if we used various schools mascots, um, to have this 3D illusion or this illusion of a 3D object in the middle of the street, it may be something more creative, more fun, more interesting. Um, I'll support this, uh, but, and you know, when we do move forward with the other intersections or crosswalks, something that I'll have, uh, for lack of a better way of describing this other than my comments that have gone on too long, a little bit more oomph, to make sure that folks will stop, notice, and not just blow through some, through some of these crosswalks, because I believe that was what our intent was when we had these discussions. Thank you, Mr. Organesian, for your report.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Najarian?
Oh, I have nothing to say.
Councilmember Agajanian?
I would like to move item eight D.
Madam Mayor, before we move on from this item, I do have two callers on the line for this.
Wow.
Okay, uh, before we get to the callers, um, I have a quest, I have a question that I'd like to get answered first. Um, is the, uh, I know we've talked about the um, a crosswalk uh, near the Adams Mini Park. Is that in the next um, uh, six uh, locations, or is that not part of this allocation?
Mayor Devine, uh, that's not part of the additional six locations, no.
And when, when are we going to be looking at that particular crosswalk?
Um, Madam Ma- uh, Madam Mayor, the uh, Adams Square and those crosswalks are part of the uh, um, the full painting of the intersection that uh, I spoke about earlier, and they are going to be addressed as a separate project. But uh, we have uh, gone out there, in fact, staff was uh, out there uh, along with myself uh, uh, last week. And we did uh, look at that area, and we are working on developing, working with the uh, the uh, Library Arts and Culture Commission uh, to develop some designs for that area. But that would be part of a separate project that we'll be bringing to the council.
Okay, and, and my other comment um, is before I, before we get the phone calls, is the fact that, uh, you know, I think any, any artwork, painting that goes on our streets, on our buildings, no matter where it is, uh, there should be input from the um, Library Arts and Culture. And um, I don't see why, uh, and I'd like to request that before you finalize, and you, I think you mentioned you have to check with colors and state regulations, et cetera, that before you finalize that decision, that uh, perhaps if you don't go to the full commission, that you invite a couple of the commissioners, maybe the chair, vice chair, uh, in to just kind of take a look and um, and give their, put their stamp on the uh, the decision. Um, or, or bring it to council, exactly what you're going to put on there, so we can get input. So I think that's really important. I love what you showed. I have no problem with what you showed. The crosswalk and the, and the uh, square, the, the crosswalk going around. I thought those were fantastic. And if I knew that's what ours would look like, I'd probably say, go ahead and do it. But I don't know, and I'd rather have um, our Arts and Culture Commission, uh, because if this ends up being something that is not acceptable, um, you know, I don't want to be the, at the other end of that conversation. I don't think my fellow colleagues want to either, so. Um, just my, uh, just my perspective. Okay, let's take the call, or calls.
Ms. Valentine, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, hi. Uh, I am totally surprised. So, uh, you're discussing safety by um, graffiti and uh, fan- fantastic fantasy paintings. My, my thought, my concern was about the safety in Chevy Chase Canyon. So this is not about the safety for pedestrians. Therefore, I will come back at oral communications. I don't want to mess up your party of your uh, fant- uh, fant- fantasies there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Next.
Bert Culver, you have three minutes. Bert, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. Um, I was just, wanted to make a comment. I mean, just tonight you approved the new bicycle plan for Glendale. It seems like we should wait to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a new bike path until after the new plan is adopted. Because if, if you go and put class two on some street, it's going to be hard to like, go and paint them over later. It's just going to be more expensive. Then it'll be adopted as a semi-permanent fixture, and I don't want class two, dangerous. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think maybe the thinking behind this is that um, the trip, the bike uh, upgrade, up- updated plan is going to take us at least a year. And so just for um, safety purposes, so that they can be seen, and uh, that, that, that's why we're uh, moving forward with the uh, painting at this point. Um, any other comments from my colleagues?
Madam Mayor.
Is there a motion?
Yes, there, I would like to move the item, but also, I just want to uh, raise my, a little bit of concern that, I mean, we paint the pedestrian walk, I mean, the crosswalk. I'm worried that the, in a set of, the, the person who would cross the street, I mean, if it's such that they have to pay lots of attention to the, the ground, and they, what, where they are walking, they are not gonna watch what's going on around them. I just wanted to bring this issue up, and maybe our staff can look that if it's such that I will, while I'm walking, I will pay attention on the ground what's going on, or where I'm walking, rather than being careful. I have a little bit concerned on it. The, I, but however, I will move the item.
Right. Do I have a second? No one's going to second?
Oh, sorry, second. I, I keep.
And now, Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. Thank you. Next item?
Next item would be E, Public Works Regarding Contract Amendment for Recycling Center Operations. One motion authorizing a contract amendment with Cedarwood Young Company, DBA Allen Company, for operation of the recycling center, increasing the contract amount by three hundred fifty thousand, and extending the contract duration to March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Devine, Member of City Council. Uh, our existing contract with Allen Company for the operation of a recycling center is set to expire at the end of October. And uh, staff and Public Works Department uh, is working on a, an RFP request for proposal. They're, they're working on finalizing it, as well as a cost-benefit analysis of the uh, of the entire operation uh, within the city of Glendale. And they, they need a little bit more time, so requesting that we uh, council approve the extension of the contract until March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two, as well as a contract amount increase by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which per ton is less than uh, other cities that are paying for, for recycling material. If you like a more detailed uh, presentation, Mr. Imroni, Public Works Director, is available to do that. Or if you have any questions, I'm sure he'll be happy to respond.
Madam Mayor, I want to move the item.
Okay, and I, I just would like to mention that um, for the viewers, for our residents that are watching this, Burbank is paying a hundred and fifty-three dollars per ton, and with this contract, we will be paying fifty-four dollars. So it's uh, I, I think it's a really good deal. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Brotman?
Brotman.
Okay, let's uh, have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. And our final item?
City Attorney Regarding Consideration of a Resolution to Allow the City Council and All City Legislative Bodies to Meet Remotely Pursuant to the Brown Act as Amended by AB three sixty-one. Resolution Authorizing Remote Teleconference Meeting of the City's Legislative Bodies for a Period of Thirty Days in accordance with AB three sixty-one.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move the item.
Councilmember Agajanian?
I would like to move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please. We have uh, motion by Mr. Agajanian, second by Mr. Najarian. Uh, roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes, thank you. Next item?
Next item would be Oral Communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and a report. Madam Mayor, I do not have any callers.
The ladies, I'm sorry, lady said that she will not speak on the item, wait until the
Move to adjourn.
Until the communication time.
Was there, was there another call? No?
There are no callers at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you. What's next item, please?
Any new business?
Madam, Madam Mayor, I have no
Madam Mayor, I have some new business.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kusakian?
Thanks. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into retainer agreement to utilize the legal services of McCune and Harbor LLP, Dana McCune, to represent the city in the case of Brian Murphy versus the City of Glendale at all, Los Angeles Superior Court Case Number 20STCV29677, and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Najarian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brothman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine. Mayor Devine, it looks like just right now I received three calls that came in for oral communication. It's up to you.
Okay, let's take them, it's only eight o'clock. Go ahead.
Michael Allen, you have five minutes. Michael, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Mike Allen, and I live in Glendale. I'm calling about the Grayson repower proposal, which to my mind, doesn't contain enough clean energy. In 2019, the city council made it clear that it wanted to avoid new gas equipment at Grayson, and city council approved an integrated resource plan. The plan allowed initial steps toward Grayson's repowering on the conditions that GWP seriously investigates additional distributed energy resources, transmission opportunities, and a plan to achieve 100% clean energy in the next 10 to 15 years. Investing in gas turbines doesn't make sense with that short, such a short horizon, and the current proposal does not satisfy city council conditions in other ways, so I believe it needs to be improved. Thank you.
Mr. Allen, next caller?
Monica Campagna? Monica, you have five minutes, go ahead.
Thank you, thank, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff, thanks for taking our calls. I'll promise to keep it short. I'm calling to continue with suggestions and strategies the city and utility can pursue to avoid new investments in gas at Grayson. Before I start, I wanted to say it was good to hear the presentations tonight, and I wanted to give a particular shout out to the Integrated Waste Department and all the work that they've done to prepare for SB 1383. It's, we're far ahead of other cities on that, and I just want to commend staff for that. This evening, I'm calling to continue to speak about demand response program, and I just wanted to mention a program in Colorado by a utility there called Holy Cross Energy. And they have a peak time payback program. Anyone can contribute energy and get paid for it when the utility is having a peak event, and they send out a call. It rewards members for reducing electricity usage during blocks of time, which are typically two to three hour periods, when they forecast the need for electricity will be higher than usual. During that time of high demand, the utility's costs for power are much higher than other times. They can range from $10 to $16 a kilowatt hour. Instead of paying that cost for power, the utility pays customers $0.50 to $1 per kilowatt hour saved during that two or three hour period on that particular day. The price offer depends on how much they want that reduction. So how do they calculate the credit? They calculate how much the customer would typically use during a similar day, creating a baseline, and then they compare that to what they actually used during the event. If they reduce their electricity use below the expected baseline, they can earn a credit for every kilowatt hour they reduce during the event. That saves the utility money, and it saves the customer's money, and the system's not strained. It is another way to avoid investing in fossil fuels that will sit idle most of the time, as really just an expensive insurance policy. This program includes all demand response. For example, people can choose to turn down their programmable thermostats or set their EV chargers to stay out of the window, and it's totally voluntary and open to both residential and commercial customers. In an interesting twist, Holy Cross Energy is also doing a pilot to ask people to do the reverse. Use the energy, instead of them curtailing, curtailing energy. Top off batteries, charge your EV, preheat or precool your structure when they have excess, like say, too much solar energy, and they want that to be put to good use, instead of having it be curtailed. And all that's done is to bill credit. In summary, in addition to our current automated thermometer turn-down program from Franklin Energy, perhaps we could incorporate a program like this. Thank you for listening, have a good night.
Ms. Valentine, you have five minutes. Ms. Valentine, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Okay, Mr. Sterndahl, I'm not going to meet tonight. Okay, I have seven requests about the serious situation on Chevy Chase Drive. Number one, would it be possible to get a striped pedestrian walkway and a warning sign put up at Chevy Chase at St. Andrews, the one that's legal by DMV? Number two, would it be possible to change the surface of the pavement in some specific areas? What are the other cities doing? Is Glendale familiar with edging or skidding surfacing? Number three request, on trial basis, would it be possible to try the bumps or humps? Or something else? A lot of streets in Glendale have them, and the fire and emergency service is working. There is no valid reason not to use bumps at the bottom of the canyon, at least at Chevy Chase and St. Andrews Corner. I'd like to send a message to the Mr. or Mrs. Traffic Engineer. I hope you will give him a copy of my email letter. Every day, multiple times a day, I get shot by the gun. Horrific gunshot. This blast activates my fight and flight reaction, and it feels like I'm stabbed with a knife into my heart. My heart is damaged every time, a little bit more. And I need protection. Mr. or Mrs. Traffic Engineer, do you know why residents are using so many red cones and other handmade tools on Chevy Chase Drive? Number five, would it be possible to get six feet of curb on the left and on the right at each driveway painted red, so that owner can safely exit and enter the traffic, the traffic? This is necessary due to the extreme blind curves. We have to do a three-way turn. Now, a big one, I have number six, which is a big one. The homeowners have destroyed the sidewalks on Chevy Chase Drive. I'm talking about the one mile of Chevy Chase. Would it be possible to restore the sidewalks to a level surface? Now, they are cut steep, narrow, and sideways. No walker, or wheelchair, or even a cane can transport the pedestrians safely out of this house. We're forced to walk on a cliff or step into the traffic. Please remember Mr. Starbird's situation. Sidewalks need to be leveled. Draining can be accomplished underneath each sidewalk. You're all engineers. Every one of you is an engineer. You can put a pipe underneath the sidewalk and drain from a private driveway. And sidewalk cuts need to be on owners' private land only. They need to be reinstated. Number six, I urge, well, Mr. Sterndahl is not here, to invite ADA inspector to help Glendaleans to have access to and from their home. Now, does anyone know what, I, I thought that this number AD was about painting, thermoplastic, road marking, pedestrian safety. I didn't hear any of it. Mr. Stern had put slurry, and that has been already, what, five, six, seven years ago? That's the last time that Chevy Chase had any, any work done? Does anyone know what the plans are for Chevy Chase? If there are any, we receive no notice, we're receiving no notice of anything.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine, your five minutes is up. We appreciate it.
This is a very serious situation, and who will take action?
Thank you, Ms. Valentine.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. I think probably we all got your email this afternoon, and I know that I forwarded to our city manager and our Director of Public Work, so that they could read over your suggestions. Thank you very much for your thoughtfulness. And with that, what is the?
I do have two more.
Oh, you do?
Yes. Debbie Becker, you have five minutes, Debbie.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Madam Mayor and councilpeople. I'm calling regarding signage that I don't know how it can be changed, but on Thompson Avenue in particular, there's signage on one side of the street that says no parking on Mondays from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And across the street for Thursdays, there's a sign that says no parking Thursday, 8:00 to 10:00 AM. And did some calling around and found out that originally those signs were created so that the streets could be swept weekly. And in fact, over time, that action has changed, so now it's done once every two weeks. The concern I have is the financial impact it has on the citizens in that neighborhood, and many neighborhoods, actually. Because if they're parked during that timeframe, when no work, city work's being done, there's a contracted ticket agency that goes around and issues tickets to people parked there, and it's a $58 fine. And so to some financially challenged people, it's hardship, because potentially you could be, you know, incurring $112 worth of fines. But what, that you don't want to incur, but it does happen. And, and so, is there any way to get that signage modified so it's clearer that, you know, the actual street cleaning is happening on the second and fourth Monday of the month? You know, without having to change the whole sign, maybe adding a sticker that indicates when the no parking current reality's occurring? I'm sorry if I'm not making sense, but I'm trying to be clear. Anyway, and, or if I could receive, I, you know, when I caught, one of the calls I made, I was asking, is there a council person I could talk to that maybe could help champion this? So I don't know where to take it next, I'm just leaving it there for you. And it sounds like from previous callers, I probably should send an email. Any, can, is there any feedback at all about that to confirm if that's what I should do?
Ma'am, we've asked for that. I have asked staff to bring back something about parking signage and when we're issuing tickets based on when we're actually doing work. Is that forthcoming?
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, I do believe that we, Public Works Department, submitted a preliminary report on that request. But if you'd like, I could have Mr. Imroni, Public Works Director, explain it briefly, the reasons why we need to have those signs up for the benefit.
Well, no, I've heard what the reasons are, and they are not justified. I feel like.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Sorry, there's, there's no back and forth. Thank you so much for the call. I was going to ask Mr. Imroni if he can go out and look at that sign, the signs, and see how they are different, and if there's anything you can do at that particular location that she's talking about.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, we had, we have these signs throughout the city at different locations, and they are essentially to allow us for doing, as was mentioned, do our street sweeping, and as well as do maintenance work that we, our staff goes out there and does work on the curbs, the sidewalks, tree trimming, a variety of different things on a rotational basis. Posting of these signs allow our staff to be able to do that without having to schedule the no parking, posting no parking signs on a regular basis. As Mr. Galanian mentioned, we had brought a report on this issue earlier, and one of the challenges that we're facing is, again, this is citywide, not just on any specific neighborhoods. So a change would, that we would have to make would be citywide, changing out the signs, basically, and also then would involve some logistics in terms of scheduling the maintenance work. And also, because we move from sector to sector throughout the city for the sweeping, it's not exactly the first or third day of the week, or the second and fourth. These are done from neighborhood to neighborhood. We go, our sweeper basically goes through and does the sweeping. However, we can go back and look at the report and bring forth, if that's the decision of the council, to bring an updated version of it before your council.
Yeah, that'd probably be advisable. Okay, let's take another, thank you, Mr. Imroni. Next caller?
Danielle Lemon?
Hi, yes, good evening. My name is Danielle Lemon, and I live in the Woodbury neighborhood of Glendale. And I'm calling to comment on the Grayson repower proposal. So I'm happy to see that the number of megawatts of gas has decreased since the plan was proposed previously. However, I urge council to hold GWP to a higher clean energy standard. The city of LA has proposed to meet 100% clean energy standard by 2035 or sooner, and Glendale needs to do the same. I recognize the importance of keeping the lights on, so GWP needs to explore ways to do that while also reducing carbon emissions, such as the virtual power point, virtual power plant. I've been waiting for the virtual power plant to get off the ground as a homeowner for several years now, and I'd love to participate, but there hasn't really been any forward movement on that that I've been aware of. So programs like these and other innovative solutions, such as the demand response that Monica Campagna was mentioning a few callers ago, would help keep the lights on and also reduce climate change at the same time, and they are possible as long as we are motivated to achieve them. And as a mother of a five-year-old daughter, I think that it's imperative that we make every effort possible to reduce our carbon footprint every opportunity that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lemon, I just want you to know that you are not the only one that is anxious for this virtual power grid to come to fruition. Staff is still in negotiations, and, am I correct? And it's going to be here when, as soon as those negotiations are complete. Correct, Mr. Galanian?
You are correct, Madam Mayor. We're still working on the final elements within the contracts, back and forth with the vendor.
Okay, thank you. And last caller, please?
That was all, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay, thank you. And what's next?
Adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a motion? I'm sorry?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned at 8:14. Thank you all.